Good afternoon. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First Peoples' traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, we will call this meeting to order at 4:01 PM. We'll begin with the adoption of the agenda administration. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
Through the chair, no changes or additions, but we have the version that was sent out. It was just an old version of the utility bylaws. There was, I think, two changes from committee to council. So those have all been updated. Those are all alive. So it was a, it is a different version slightly from what was originally posted.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any additions, changes to the agenda? Or I would look for a motion to adopt. Counselor Haas.
I'd like to move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much, Counselor Haas. Counsel, any discussion on that? Seeing none, then we'll call to question. Counsel, if you could please vote now. Counselor Race, are you voting in favor? And thank you very much. So Counselors Ostaschik and Race voting in favor, and that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Counsel. That brings us to counsel minutes for adoption. Counselor Race.
I'd like to move that we adopt the regular council meeting minutes for December 3rd, 2024. Committee of the whole meeting, December 10th, 2024, and special counsel meeting, December 11th, 2024.
Thank you very much, Counselor Race. Counsel, any discussion on that? Seeing none, then we'll call to question. We'll just wait for that to appear. Called to question, the council adopt the minutes from the regular council meeting on December 3rd, 2024. Committee of the whole meeting on December 10th, 2024, and the special counsel meeting on December 11th, 2024. Counsel, if you can please vote now. Counselor Race in favor? Counselor Ostaschik in favor. That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And that will bring us to citizens minute with counsel. We have three presenters that are registered for today. Sorry.
Through the chair, I do have another gentleman up here. He'd like to join for minute with counsel.
Okay.
After the first two that you have.
Okay, sounds good. Then we will start with Mr. David Golden. Dave, if you can just come up here. For anybody who's speaking to counsel this evening, just a few reminders, please. Minute with counsel provides an opportunity where residents can address counsel regarding issues, events, celebrations, or concerns. To ensure constructive and welcoming environment, please adhere to the following rules. Please keep your remarks concise, limited to one minute. Address the chair, if you could please, when speaking to counsel. Avoid asking councils. It's not a Q and A session with counsel. And if you can please maintain a respectful tone and language. And if you could just identify yourself, please feel free to have a seat, Mr. Golden, and we'll get you. Perfect. Thank you very much, Ms. Davy Campbell.
So my name is David Golden. I live in Yellowhead County. This is regards to Pathway to the Park. Now, I know that some members of council are new and played no part in the previous sanctioning of the monies in the free land asked for and given to Pathway to the Park. Today, you have the opportunity to make an informed decision on a request more money than I asked that you deny this. Thus far, Pathway to the Park has been given approximately $100,000. And I understand a piece of land by Ramada, and you have to put a value on that. And I put a value of $100,000. So the council has thus far given away $200,000, and a request has come in for another $50,000. So with that $50,000, that could be $250,000 you may or may not be giving away. I ask that you deny this request for a multitude of reasons, being lack of due diligence by our management team, failure to adhere to provincial lands act, failure to meet the obligations to the Trail Act. So in today's climate, common sense has to prevail. Uncertainty, and we cannot afford to keep throwing good money away when it can be better utilized in this area, in this community, in this town. Let's not give it away to Pathway to the Park, where it's a future probability, not a actual event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. I have next up representative from Pathway to the Park. Garth? Oh, sorry, is that who had registered for Pathway? Jen? Oh, no. Oh, Jen, who is, sorry, I have Pathway written down as my second delegation.
Pardon? Yes.
Okay.
I'm a lot of things, but not that. Hey. Hi, my name is Shelley Byrne. I have lived in Aspen Heights for the past 11 years and in the town of Hinton for 10 years prior to that. It is my opinion that the Pathway to the Park has not met the conditions attached to the release of the 2024 budgeted amount. Stating that you have a trail manager is not a management plan. Stating that future funding will cover the cost of maintaining, for future fundraising will cover the cost of maintaining the trail is a recipe for failure. I would like to remind counsel that in December of 2021, the vice chairman of the Pathway to the Park stated, "We are not pretending that the society will have much life after the trail is complete." I would like to highlight a letter from M.L.A. Martin Long that was received yesterday and forwarded to counsel by me, in which he states, "This project has been postponed pending widespread support in writing from the municipalities." As we already know, Yellowhead County does not support this project at this time. Do you really want to waste taxpayer money by sending good money after bad? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And then, Ms. Davy Campbell.
If I may, can I have a clarifying question to administration on the matter that is being discussed?
At this moment, actually, no, Counselor Haas, I won't. I don't think that's appropriate, given the format. I do have a third person that was registered for speaking. Please, sir. And if you could, if you could just identify yourself. Thank you so much.
My name is Logan Pankew. I'm just here to voice my opinion about the Pathway to the Park. Hinton, Alberta, the gateway to the Rockies. Hinton is one of the most rundown, unmaintained cities in Alberta, from what I can tell. From the hospital to the trail systems, everything.
Sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there, and I imagine what I'm about to get from my fellow counselors. I'll start with Counselor Ostaschik. Just give me a moment, please. Counselor Ostaschik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to request a point of order and that you request the speaker to ensure that he's maintaining respectful tone when he addresses the council, please.
Thank you, Counselor Ostaschik. So, sir, just from a, from a chair's point of view, we do ask that you keep your tone.
That's how I talk, man. This is how I talk.
Okay. So I will ask you as kindly as I can, please keep it respectful. I'd like to give you your minute, but just keep.
Did I say something wrong? Or it's just the sound of my voice?
No, it's just the comments. The comments need to be respectful, saying that the community is rundown.
It is rundown.
Counselor Haas.
Yeah, point of order. I mean, the tone is not adhering to the rules. Respectful tone and language and to come up here and to address counsel that we're run downtown and all the different things is not a respectful tone. If you have a problem with a project, tell us about it. But, you know, that's where we're at. If you've got something to say, let's say it nicely.
So if I may, so there's an action item before counsel this evening. Obviously, that's what you're here to speak to. If there's one way you'd like to see a counselor vote or not, I just encourage you to share with counsel what you're hoping to see that way, please.
I find it so unsettling that we are planning to spend hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars on a walking trail to someone's gold mine. I find the sidewalk situation in this town so embarrassing. You cannot walk anywhere in this town on a continuous sidewalk. There are places in this town where the sidewalks end, and you literally walk on the side of the road next to heavy traffic traveling at 60 kilometers an hour. And I'm talking specific spots in front of gusses. If you want to walk from Thompson Lake on this into the Green Square, you have to walk on this, on the highway or in the ditch. I find it so wacko that we are planning to spend money on a trail that has nothing to do with this town, and no environmental impact has ever been assessed on the leaching of the pavement or the damage to the waterways. And that's it, man.
Thank you. Ms. Davy Campbell, do we have anybody else on the delegates list?
No, no one else, thank you.
Okay, or citizens minute with counsel, pardon me. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, I appreciate the ruling earlier, but I do have a follow-up question. My understanding from what is coming this evening is not the 2024 budget amount that's been allocated. It's actually the 2023 for 2024. Is that correct, administration? Because this is already money that we have budgeted for for 2024, and the stipulations that we put forward for 2025, that hasn't been met yet. But this was previous money that we've allocated. Is that correct? Or am I mistaken?
Good men.
Through the chair, that's correct. So that would have been, as, that decision would have been made as a part of the 2024 budget deliberations in the latter, latter part of 2023.
2023, okay. So I just, if I may, Mr. Chair, I wanted to confirm that because these are not $20,000 that are on the agenda this evening. These were 2024 budgeted amounts. So that we're just clear on that because there is other stipulations that are on the 2025. But this was already a commitment that counsel had made a while back. We have the opportunity to discuss it, but I just wanted to get that on record. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. We will move on to delegations and presentations. Item 5.1, I have urban metropolis entertainment request to waive fees. And I believe they are attending via Zoom, Ms. Davy Campbell, is that correct?
The gentleman hasn't joined the meeting as of yet, so.
Okay. Then we will move on to item 5.2, the Hinton Healthcare Foundation update. And we'd ask our delegates from the Hinton Healthcare Foundation to come on. Chair, you're good.
Oh, this is Fiona Galbraith, and I'm Garth Griffiths. First of all, it doesn't seem like it was six months ago we were just here asking for money. But here we are to give you a six-month report on what we've done so far. The Hinton Healthcare Foundation is grateful to the community of Hinton for the funding received to sustain the operations of the Hinton Medical Clinic. This support has been instrumental in keeping our doors open and ensuring the availability of primary healthcare services for the community. While the initial months presented challenges in getting operations fully underway, the past two months have shown notable progress. However, the continued loss of physicians, exacerbated by the departure of two more in 2025, has heightened concerns within the community. In response to the foundations alongside, in response, the foundation alongside with the Attraction and Retention Committee have been diligently working to make Hinton an attractive destination for healthcare professionals. Yon is going to talk about the attraction and retention.
So the Attraction and Retention Committee of Hinton, or as we also call it, ARCH, was formed in the spring of 2024 as a subcommittee of the foundation. And we held our first meeting in April. The town contributed $7,000 in 2024 to support the committee getting underway and our efforts enabling a focused approach to addressing the challenges of physician attraction and retention. 2024 successes for ARCH included completing 95% of our strategic priorities for the year, including attracting, retaining, and communication campaigns. Planning for 2025 priorities is set to begin again in January. Some of the initiatives that we have undertaken, recruitment, outreach. So we have sent committee members to a U of A professional trade show, nursing and others, to promote Hinton's opportunities. Rural Health Profession Conference in October, members attended the ARPAP, or Rural Health Professionals Action Plan Conference, to connect with healthcare professionals, share the benefits of working in Hinton, and to hear about what other communities were doing. Family Medicine Forum. In November, representatives hosted a booth at the Family Medicine Forum in Vancouver, showcasing the Hinton Hospital and the benefits of working in our community. Accommodation and incentives. We have secured two rental properties to support visiting locums and facilitate a smooth transition for temporary and permanent physicians. We've developed an incentive package that includes no overhead costs for an initial period and family-friendly accommodations to ensure seamless integration into the community. Advertising and awareness. We are actively working on marketing healthcare job opportunities to expand our reach and attract talented professionals to Hinton. In addition to our recruitment efforts, the foundation and the Attraction and Retention Committee have prioritized activities to foster a welcoming and supportive environment for both new and current healthcare professionals. We have developed welcome bags for physician locums to thank them for coming to Hinton and providing services. We've also, it's helped us showcase the many opportunities that are bound in Hinton. In September, we hosted welcome events for the University of Alberta medical students, introducing them to our clinic, our hospital, and the community. This initiative aimed at build, to build relationships early and encourage interest in Hinton as a potential workplace. So we have been busy planting seeds. Staff and physician recognition. To show appreciation for our current dedicated healthcare professionals, we organized a physician and staff recognition barbecue in September and a Christmas luncheon last week. These events were well-received and helped foster morale and a sense of community within our team.
We've included the following. Budget review, overview, the financial control and management plan, an operational control plan, risk management and contingency plan, and a proposed physician agreement. Looking ahead, the foundation in collaboration with ARCH remains steadfast in its commitment to being a philanthropic leader for healthcare. Together, we are focused on attracting and retaining healthcare professionals, looking at innovative ways to bring primary healthcare to the community, bridging the gaps and fostering a supportive environment for current staff. We sincerely thank you for your assistance, and we look forward to your continued partnership as we work forward to safeguard the health and wellbeing of our community.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Griffiths and Ms. Galbraith. Our mayor, or deputy mayor had to step out, so I'm going to take over while he's gone. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. I have a couple of questions. So the rent on the two properties, is that the rent money coming from the monies you receive from the town? Or how is that rent being paid?
In the contract we have with you, with the town, sorry, the contract we have with you is that it's to do with, we can spend money to retain and attract medical people to come to Hinton. And part of that is the locums that are coming to town. And we want them to be able to stay in a place that they can feel comfortable. And that's, so to answer your question is yes.
And I'll go back in queue if you'd like, sir.
Would, I have a question too. If you could turn your mic off, please.
Sure.
Thank you. I have myself to clarify that then. Because my understanding is locums are, have nothing to do with the clinic. That's the hospital. Is that, am I correct?
Right.
Nope, they do sometimes work at the clinic as well.
Okay, because that's, that's my question. Because my understanding is, you know, the monies that were given specifically were to directly to the clinic. So I guess my thoughts are, because there were some other things that you mentioned in your report, that the, the, would seem more healthcare foundation rather than clinic. And I mean, I'm glad you're doing all that work, don't get me wrong. But it's the, the, where the dollars that we've allocated to the clinic, that those dollars are being used for the clinic only, in my opinion.
So Trevor, we are bringing GPA or GP anethetists, locums to come, so that we only have one GP anethetist right now.
Right.
And so to get, let him be able to have a break or come down and work at the clinic, because he is our only anethetist. We have a robust surgical program in Hinton. We need to give him breaks and also allow him to come down and provide primary care. The other thing that we're finding is most physicians, especially Canadian-trained, want to do locums right now. They don't want to sign on with a clinic. So the locums that we're bringing, they're doing locums all over the province. And what they're saying to us is the welcome that we are giving them, planting the seeds of Hinton, is also going to, they have Hinton as their number one priority when they decide that they want to settle down, maybe have children, and, and choose a community. So we are really, the feedback we got from locums, if they come for two weeks, they hate staying in a hotel. They don't, they can't eat properly. They can't do their laundry and all of those things. So we decided that we would provide some housing. We have locums who are, said, "I was only going to come here once to the town." I came, they came all the way from Ontario with their family for two weeks. Now, we have given them a great welcome. They've loved the hospital. They're general practitioner and anethetist, so they want to practice family medicine at the clinic. So they're also considering. So it's, it's planting seeds, but it's also, you know, giving people an opportunity to look at Hinton, look at what the hospital has and what the clinic has. So they also get a tour of the clinic, and they get to see the, the opportunities.
So I'm going to say, can I follow up? And I'm here. So I guess I need some clarity then. The $250,000 that was to, to the clinic, is that where those funds are coming from to do, to provide the housing for those locums and things like? Because the reason I'm asking that question is there's a lot of controversy over this. I'm going to be honest with you. There's a lot of people in the community that feel we shouldn't have done this. And I know, because it's the province's responsibility. But I need to have that, this isn't bringing in doctors to HS and to the hospital, in my opinion, because that's their responsibility. This money was geared to the clinic. So that's where I'm at, is, is that money funding going directly to the clinic? And if there's locums coming to the clinic, great. But if those locums are also providing services in Alberta Health Services to the hospital, then I guess I, I'd have to question mark that. So, and I'll hand it back over to the chair.
The physicians that come to Hinton don't just ever choose to only work at the hospital much. There's maybe one or two ever. They do both, and so that's part of our problem. They, the lack of ability for them, for us to have lots of primary care is because physician, we have to keep a merge open, or let's try our best. We have to keep our surgical programs running. We have to keep the inpatients, right? So it's all intertwined. We don't really have where you just, you're, you're not going to, you know, kind of come to Hinton and maybe not work at the clinic. So, but we actually have not spent any of the dollars yet on the housing that we have from the $250,000 that we got from you. That is coming out from, from our foundation. But when we reviewed the contract, it does say that we can spend money on attracting. And really, that's, or retaining, right? So that's how we're going to attract people, is they've got to come and have a look at Hinton and, and have a great experience while they're here. And then perhaps they'll say, "I will be a GP down at the clinic, plus I'll work in a merge, or I'll do obstetrics," or whatever.
The other thing too, Trevor, I agree with you totally that, and I agree with a lot of people in the community. I don't believe this is a town responsibility. And we said that back six months ago when we first came. I mean, the point is, is if we didn't do this, we may not have had a clinic at all today. We may not have the six or seven doctors that we do have in town right now. So I agree with you 100%. I don't believe that the town should be paying for this. But until we can convince the powers that be, I don't know what we're going to do about it. I don't know what we've done so far to talk to the province about this, but it's, it's wrong. I totally agree.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Taylor.
Can you refresh us? What have we done with regards to getting money from the province or asking the province?
Through the chair, the, I would say that the biggest one is there's a new municipal, or a new municipality-supported clinic grant stream. So we have applied for $200,000 to, to offset some of those costs for, for this initiative.
And that would be eligible to offset these costs.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that good, Counselor Taylor?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to our delegation. Thank you so much for being here today. On page 21 of your, of the package, under mission and vision, it says, "The Healthcare Foundation to secure community funding." And then under goals, it says, "To maintain undisrupted clinic operations with community funding." What does that mean? Does that mean money from the town?
Well, our funding that's coming in right now is coming in from the doctors themselves. They, they contribute substantially to this. And the town of Hinton has, or the community has actually supported it so that the balance is being covered. And I think that's what that.
May I do a quick follow-up?
Please.
So are we looking to get back to the day where we have, you know, 15, 16 doctors in the clinic, all contributing monies for their clinic? Is that what we're looking?
We would love nothing better than to tell you that we have 10 more doctors on the way. I just saw, I think, from, on Facebook this morning, from Edson, talking about how they have got a few more doctors than we do at this point. But they are very concerned because it's not sustainable. And this isn't a problem for Hinton. This is a problem for all of Canada and, and Alberta. And I, I don't know what the answer is going to be. Like, to be very honest, we're looking at some different ideas of bringing in different ways of providing primary healthcare to, to the citizens of Hinton in regards to practitioners, to... There's just, we're doing doctors online. There's just a whole bunch of things that we're going to try and bring in and see if we can't make it easier for people to be able to have a doctor. It's not easy. And these doctors are, and the ones we have here, and to be, to really, to be quite frank, these doctors that we have here are working their hearts out, and, and they work hard for us. And we thank them that they're here, because there's lots of places that don't even have the doctors we do.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Counselor Haas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hate to put you guys on the spot, but, you know, one of the reasons or one of the things that were coming up is customer service down at the clinic. And I'm not hearing any changes there, to be honest with you. I'm hearing even worse, to be honest with you, with the customer service. I'm also hearing scheduling is still a nightmare. Now, I don't know if it's true, but the word I've got is you got to be online at 4:00 in the morning to get an appointment for walk-in. If we only have three or four doctors, I can't, I don't understand that, to make an appointment at 4:00 in the morning and then still not get an appointment, which baffles me. And I've heard this over and over again. And customer services is, is huge. So I'm, my hope was that by getting into there, that would be some of the things that we're changing. What has been done to make some changes in that area when it comes to the management of the clinic?
We have a meeting with the clinic every month, and we talk to the manager there. We also have other discussions on an ongoing basis. They are aware that that is a concern. And I mean, I don't know what, how we're ever gonna stop. We, we don't have the doctors to deal with all the people that are here now.
Yep.
And I've never heard of anybody out there at four in the morning. But, you know, what I am hearing is sometimes the attitude isn't the very best. And everything to do with, with customers and today, and especially if you're not getting, you know, the care and attention that you feel you should get. It's, it's tough. And we, the other part too is I think it's important is that we've been doing this now for six months. And during that time, we've dealt with a fire, we've dealt with a whole bunch of different little challenges that have come our way. And I think, I honestly think it has improved, but, but I could be, I mean, I think it's, I think it's better. And I think that the, we've got the costs kind of in line, or really in line in a lot of ways. We're trying to do all the things that it's possible to do. But one of the things we need to do is figure out how to attract doctors to come to Hinton. And then all these other problems are gonna go away. But.
So if I may to follow up. Now, my understanding, and, and again, you know more than I do, but the, the, the scheduling used to be stand in line and hope you get that. And the change was to be at really, really early in the morning so you can get in. And it was all online. So that was where, where I preference that, which I'm not sure if that's a better system, but my concern is, is I agree with you. We need to recruit the doctors, but where they're going to work has to be a healthy environment. And that's where I'm, if the clients and the patients are, are not happy going, then it's going to also not be, you know, so I'm hoping that in the next number of months, you know, that something can be done. Now, my understanding, though, reading the report, is that's not really what you, your group was going to be doing, was digging into the management of it. But in my opinion, that is what needs to be done, because the management is the critical part of the clinic.
We have asked the clinic manager to be looking into bringing education to the staff about customer service. And I think she started that.
Okay.
The, I, the walk-in has decreased because of the lack, the lack of physicians. So the appointments aren't there as many as there were even in, you know, six, seven months ago. But we, she's, the clinic manager has split it into three. So there's online booking, which opens at 5:30 in the morning, I think. Once those are gone, you have the opportunity to call in, starting at nine, or you can also go in online, like stand in line. So that's why when Garset, we are trying to look at some innovative, out-of-the-box thinking of how can we bring primary care services access in the meantime, until we are able to recruit doctors. So we are, we are in discussions with different groups. We can't, like, we aren't really saying anything yet.
Yeah.
But hopefully, in the new year, we'll have some, you know, something to report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Haas. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you very much to you and your group for all the work you do. I'm a hundred percent convinced that we've got the right group of people on it. And the reason the clinic's open today is cuz of the work you've done. One of the exciting things in your report that I saw that I was interested in is the telehealth. You know, when, when like, cuz a lot of the stuff, you go see a doctor, you don't have to be in person. And is this gonna be telehealth out of the clinic?
We are looking at that, for sure.
Clinic supported too, right?
We, we have, we are in discussion with some companies that provide that. And one of our big pieces was we, we wanted to make sure that the physicians we have did not have to do all the follow-up. Because in, in a lot of telehealth, you see a physician, and that's it. Then they're gone, done. And then the follow-up goes on to the physicians we have. So the group that we're talking with now, you can, that can be your family doctor, if you feel comfortable with telehealth, which is something in healthcare, we've done, you know, telepsychiatry for many years and all kinds, telepomanology, all kinds of things that we've done in the past. It's very successful. But we don't wanna burden so the, the docs that are there. So these, this group will do follow-up. You can have that same physician, if you like that person, you can have them all the time. You can do the follow-up with them. They can discuss the results with you. The results aren't dumped on the docs that are there. So there's lots of things that we definitely are looking at. And our hope is that, because we do know many people, especially the elderly, are not you know, tech savvy. So doing a Zoom call is really difficult for them. So if we did look at something at the clinic where it was set up and a staff member could get you on. The other thing, when we talk to these physicians is when you do Zoom calls from your home, they don't know your blood pressure, they don't know your pulse, they don't know your temperature is. So if we can, we're kind of in the process of looking at that, so that can be done as well, and they would be able to help you even more. So, yeah, we are looking at some of those things.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Race.
Thank you, sir. This is my last question. I did give you a heads up that I would be asking this question. And it may be hard to answer, but in, in a week, can you give us a rough estimate as to how many patients the clinic would be seeing?
Well, to be honest with you, I, I had, I knew you were gonna ask that question, so I tried to get an answer for you. Lot of it depends on, of course, the doctors that are in the clinic at the time. I mean, sometimes there's two, sometimes there's five, six, it depends. One, yeah, none. So it varies a lot. And I asked the question, it was from 20 to 180 or something, to that effect, yeah, per day. So it, it really varies on the doctors that are available. So I can't really give you a good answer, Joanne, sorry.
No, that was, that was great. That was great. Thank you.
Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I do appreciate the work you guys. You came into a, a bad spot. I get that, you know, and these are the things that we hear in your questions. And it's the first chance we've had to talk to you about it. So I do have a question that's actually kind of for administration and for you. You know, one of the things that come to mind is I was unaware of all of those three different things. And I try to keep track of Facebook and everything, but I'm wondering, administration, is it possible to assist with communications on these things from the town's perspective, to help out the foundation and the clinic, to help the community understand what the way, how the way it is to, you know, for various, whatever it has, whatever, you know, or changes made. Cuz I, I do see every once in a while on Facebook, somebody on, from the clinic goes and says, hey, we're closing it this time, or we're taking people in, but it's kind of hit or miss. So is, is administration, is that possible that we could assist in that way, not giving, I know communication is not a lot, but is that something we could assist with?
Through the chair, the members of the council, yeah, there is. I think it would just be a matter of the foundation and our staff working together to, if there are some key changes or maybe new services, like we were just talking about, coming in, we can certainly collaborate and put that out through our channels as well. So.
Yeah, cuz I, I just feel that if there is not the information, it's hit or miss, then it's misinformation, you know. And, and if we can communicate better to the, to the community on the initiatives that, you know, that the clinic is doing, then it may not be as frustrating or stressful. I think it's also an opportunity to highlight some of these things that have been being done, you know, and, and the work that's being done in some way, shape or form. I'm not saying maybe that's not communications, but you know, I think the more we can communicate and help, the better. And we do have an investment now in that clinic. So I think we, we need to make sure that that's makes successful. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Haas. Council, any further questions for our delegation?
I just had one quick thing to mention is that it's really important to understand too, that the mayor and Joanne are on our arch committee as well. So they're part of, they know what's going on as far as the attention or attraction piece is. So they're aware of it, cuz they're on our committee. This, most important thing though, I, I'm gonna meet with our MLA later on this evening. And I think it's really important that we get it out there, that, that the province needs to step up and decide how they're gonna help us do. Because this really is not a town thing. This is really a provincial. I appreciate, and so does, we all do. We appreciate so much the fact that you guys are doing all this and that the community is behind it. Without it, we would really be in deep trouble. So, but still, over and above that, I mean, we're not in Ottawa, and we don't have quite the challenges they do right now. But I'd like to create a few challenges for the province. So.
Thank you very much. Council, anything further? On behalf of council, thanks for taking the time to come out and present to us this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Evi Campbell, since we've been with that delegation, has Urban Metropolis appeared on the line at all?
No, he hasn't.
Okay. So then we will move on to our public hearing. Oh, sorry, CAO.
Thank you, Chair. Just because this was a, there, there was an action requested from this, and there was a report included. If council could provide a little bit of direction on what we wanna do with that report, and I think we have two options. That council receives it for information, or council directs administration to bring the request back to a regular, the next regular meeting of council.
Thank you. I have councillor Race and then councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. So at this meeting right now, would we be able to make a motion to waive that 100 or 801?
Dollars? Councillor Race, we are talking about the, sorry.
It is.
I just wanna make sure. So CAO, you, you're looking to action, which of the following requests?
Through the chair, I, I was referring to the Urban Metropolis request. And if I could, councillor, councillor Race, council can, but I would just caution of doing that now. I think an accompanied administrative report would be would be good for council to look at, because this is our standard practice. All of our local tournaments put on by minor hockey, they all are under this system. So it would be, you know, creating a division of how we treat different user groups. So I think if council is interested in granting the request, that we come back with a report and council can make a, an informed decision.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Haas.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the Urban Metropolis report for, or request for information, please. And if I may speak to it.
Please.
I was somewhat prepared to listen, wasn't prepared to make the decision, but I'm gonna be frank, the frank, the fact that they didn't show up, they're a delegation, and they didn't make any effort to cancel or give a reason why. Then I, I have no appetite in waiving these fees. These were fees, obviously, that were known to the group, I would assume, would have been part of the charges. And the fact that they've already had the tournament on November 1st and 3rd and are coming back now to waive those fees, I don't think, you know, that could have been a conversation that could have been had during the negotiations, in my opinion, of using our facility. And quite frankly, I mean, you know, I don't know what the fees are. They make comments about other sites that don't have these fees. I don't know what their charges and fees are. They probably may charge that into the already charges. It may be additional charges or higher charges. So I think it reasonable that $801 for the wear and tear of our equipment and the fact that we have to staff people and we have to flood these ice more often in a tournament is a reasonable cost. So, thank you.
Councillor Race.
Thank you, sir. So I think there could be 10 really, really good reasons why these people did not show up, weren't able to zoom in. We don't know what those reasons are. So I, I spoke with this fellow. He has, he said the best things about this town. So I will support this motion for it to be accepted as information, because that means it can be brought back to us. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor.
Is what councillor Haas said true regarding they knew about this fee? This fee came as no surprise to them in advance?
Through the chair, yes, they, to all tournaments have to sign a contract. And this isn't the first time that this particular group was, was in Hinton. So they did, they were here last year. They did pay the fees last year.
And that fee was in the contract.
That's correct.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Council, seeing no one else on the speakers queue, I will call the question. The council accept the Urban Metropolis report for information. Council, if you could please vote now. Thank you very much councillor Ostagh. That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Admin, does that satisfy the information that you needed moving forward?
It does. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. That being said, we will move on to section six, the public hearing, the public notification bylaw. The following public hearing is held pursuant to the Municipal Government Act. The following rules of conduct will be followed during the public hearing. Presentation should be brief and to the point. The order of presentation shall be entry of written submissions, those supporting the bylaw, those opposing, opposing the bylaw, any other person deemed to be affected by the bylaw. Council may ask questions of the speakers after each presentation for clarification purposes. There will be no debating the bylaw. However, questions to the councillors or other parties will be accepted through the chair. And with that, I hereby declare the public hearing related to the bylaw number 2002 open. Secretary?
The purpose of the proposed bylaw number 2002 is to provide one or more methods, which may include electronic means for advertising, proposed bylaws, resolutions, meetings, public hearings, and other things referred to in section 606 of the Municipal Government Act. First reading of this bylaw was bylaw number 2002, was given on November 19th, 2024. Notice of this public hearing was advertised in the Hinton Voice on December 5th and 12th, 2024, and advertised on the Towne Hinton website via Civic Send and the Towne Hinton Facebook page.
Are there any late written submissions relating to the bylaw?
Yes, there is one. And I will read it in ten minutes. Advertising methods required for notices under 606 should continue to require the use of local newspapers as long as they are in print. I understand that the intent is present, but I would like to ensure that any intent is mandated by bylaw 2002. Social media algorithms control what is presented to consumers and cannot be trusted to distribute crucial information. Additionally, they pose the issue where the residents believe that they are having a conversation with the municipality. And while the town has posted a statement saying otherwise, residents continue to demonstrate the belief that replies to social media are forwarded within the town's structure. While the town's website does an adequate job, it can be hard to search and it is not the go-to resource that the town thinks it is. A good indicator of this is the low adoption of the community calendar. I encourage the return of requiring print media to this bylaw. True journalism should be supported by the town as it is a bastion of democracy and should not be easily abandoned. Thank you, Sue Allen.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who supports the bylaw and wishes to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone who opposes the bylaw and wishes to speak? Mr. Woodley? If you would, please, we'll get you up here. Perfect. And then, again, if you could just speak your name for the record, and then please feel free.
Yeah, actually, I recorded my three-minute thing, so I'm just gonna play it while I sit here. I got cold. Walter Woodley? I guess the best way to do it. Support this bylaw in its current form. This proposed bylaw does not address how the town notifies a small group of specific affected people that have an individual right to respond or act within a short window of time to a decision or proposal. Example, development permit has been approved for a new business that affects four residential properties next to or near it. They have 21 days to appeal. Applying mega regulation 60612, this is example. Before making the bylaw, the, the Hinton Town Council must be satisfied. The development approval notification method is likely to bring the development permits approval notice and right to appeal to the attention of substantially all four affected residents of the development. Yellowhead County, Edson, Grand Prairie, Barhead, Wigan County, and Whitecart Municipalities all have provisions in their LUP to allow the Development Authority to mail notifications to affected people of proposed and/or approved discretionary use and permanent use with variance permits. with variance permits. Hinton currently only advertises discretionary use permits in the newspaper. So why are permanent use permits, uh, should have the public notification from the two twenty? You guys were, uh, prior to January twenty twenty, um, publicly advertising all permitted use and discretionary use. And I think in a housekeeping bill for the land use bylaws, that went down to just discretionary. Awesome, but, uh, I'll continue this. Subdivision Development Appeal Board Training Manual, um, Land and Property Rights Tribunal, Alberta Municipal Affairs. These are, there are Alberta Court of Appeals ruling cases in there for training. Here's one, Roe versus Edmonton. The subdivision development appeal board has the ability to hear appeals from the issuance of a development permit for permitted use and determine whether there has been a relaxation, variation, or misinterpretation, misinterpretation of the land use bylaw. If this, the, the SDAB concludes there was not, the appeal must be dismissed. The Municipal Government Act says there is no appeal for development permits for the permitted use unless the Development Authority has relaxed, varied, or misinterpreted land use bylaw provisions. However, this restriction cannot stop the subdivision development appeal board from deciding whether the Development Authority has relaxed, varied, or misinterpreted the LUB. Applying Maga Regulation six oh six again, before making a bylaw, the Hinton Town Council must be satisfied. The development approval notice method is likely to bring, bring the permitted use permit approval notice and their right to submit an appeal to the attention of substantially all affected residents of the, of the development. This tells me the Town of Hinton Development Authority should have public notification of all permitted use permits and their right to submit an appeal. The Development Authority's discretion should not prevent an affected party from submitting an appeal on the basis it is a permitted use development. Awesome. Just restarted.
Thank you, Mr. Woodley. Uh, was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I can, uh, I can leave a copy of that.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you very much. Sorry, I will double check, uh, council. Any questions for our delegate? No.
Or I leave a copy.
Uh, you can leave a copy of it with Ms. Davy Campbell. Thank you, Mr. Woodley. Is there anyone else who opposes the bylaw and wishes to speak? This is a bylaw relating to, uh, public notifications, uh, going in electronic communications or requiring the Town of Hinton to maintain, uh, posted notices through local newspapers as well. In, in short. Um, is there anyone else who opposes the bylaw and wishes to speak? Is there anyone else deemed to be affected by the bylaw and wishes to speak? Are there any comments from council's administration? Seeing none. Counsel, do you have any further questions? Counselor Race?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question for administration. So I realize that, um, section six oh six of the MGA says it has to be put into the newspaper. Is there any reason why we could not add newspaper to this bylaw as, um, um, three point one point three?
CAO, please.
Uh, through the chair to members of council, th- there's no reason why we can't do it. It's just, uh, I would just say it's a little bit redundant. Um, we do have it in the very first where as section, uh, that it refers to the specific language that's reflected in section six oh six that outlines that, um, uh, meetings, public hearings, or other things by advertising a newspaper or other publications circulating the area, uh, mailing or delivering a notice to every resident in the affected area or by another method provided for in a bylaw under six oh six point one. So this is really what this, the bylaw provides is just other alternatives for those statutory advertising requirements, but newspaper is mentioned.
Counselor Race, do you have a clarification? It looks like you might.
Yeah, I do. I just have one little question.
Please.
So would this be a time where, um, I could make a motion to have, uh, newspaper added as three point one point three?
Uh, no, I think that would be when it actually hits the action item stage.
Alrighty. Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Uh, Counselor, uh, Taylor?
Is, um, so new putting in a newspaper, um, even if we do this, this just adds on these two other, uh, electronic means. But the newspaper is mandatory right now and will, will always be mandatory?
CAO, please.
Uh, through the chair. So as of right now, it is mandatory to go into the newspaper. Um, or we send it out, or we have to send it out to everybody. But practically speaking, it's the newspaper that's mandatory through the legislation. Um, by passing this bylaw gives us other alternatives to meet our legislated requirements that may not be the newspaper. Um, you know, we still intend to use the newspaper, uh, anytime we can. But for example, if they're, they're off over the holiday break or other, you know, other issues, or if we missed the deadline and we need to get its, uh, the process started, we have other alternative methods.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, uh, do you have any further questions? Does counsel require, pardon me, do the counselors require further information? If not, I hereby declare the public hearing related to bylaw two zero zero two uh, is closed and will accept a motion to adjourn. Counselor Haas?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you very much. Counsel, we will, uh, see that, uh, that motion before us, then I'll call the question. There we are. Counsel, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call to question that, uh, the public hearing, uh, be adjourned for bylaw, bylaw, pardon me, two zero zero two. Counsel, please vote now. And that is carried unanimously with Counselor Race voting in favor. Um, hold on a second. Nope. Administration, before I rule on that, I have Counselor Nissen showing up as in favor.
I have him marked as absent, so I'm not sure why that's coming up. Sorry.
Counsel, if we can just, uh, clarify with a vote, uh, showing a, a show of hands, uh, if you are, uh, in, all those in favor, please, for adjournment. That is carried unanimously. Counselor, or pardon me, Mayor Nissen is not here, so make sure the record reflects that he did not vote. And I hereby declare that, uh, the public hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much. We will move on to action items. Seven point one, the public notification bylaw related to the public hearing that we just had. Uh, and we will turn this over to administration. Admin?
And Chair, I will turn this over to Ms. Borbo.
Uh, thank you and good evening, council. Administration is before you this evening, looking for a second and third reading on bylaw two zero zero two. We want to provide assurance that legislated under section six oh six is always newspaper require advertising. We view the electronic means as a safeguard to enhance what's already in the newspaper, um, not to replace it at all. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. or, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that council gives second reading to the public notification bylaw number two zero zero two as presented. If I can quickly speak to it.
Please.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, you know, the, the comments made, uh, in regards to the, um, the newspaper articles. Uh, you know, I mean, I have no intention that that's removed. This is just see as an opportunity to reach more people, um, in the community, uh, via the, uh, electronic way. Um, because not everybody uses or reads the paper, uh, or sees those in there. So, um, I think this is, uh, an important addition to this bylaw. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think we are seeing, the written word is unfortunately, um, we're seeing evidence of that as newspapers and things are, are, um, declining, unfortunately. So this is an opportunity to get it out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Ostachik?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just before I, uh, vote on this, I do have a question for administration. What's the current practice for deciding whether? Uh, I, I understand that it gets put in the newspaper. Currently, it's a requirement. With this, though, I understand it's still the intention to put it in the newspaper, but this could forego that as a requirement. So what's the assurance that we are reaching out to as many people as we possibly can to make sure that they are informed of bylaws, resolutions, meetings, public hearings, and other things? Uh, in addition to that, when is it determined by administration that it's appropriate to, uh, mail or deliver notice to every residence in the affected area?
Admin?
Uh, so through the chair, you know, the assurance really is that we think that that's a good practice for the newspaper. But I would say that with this bylaw, you are providing some flexibility to administration to, to provide, uh, notifications uh, in other mechanisms. We don't intend to do that. Uh, but if council believes that the newspaper is the only method that should ever be used, then, you know, my recommendation would be to vote against this bylaw. Um, but we still intend to do that. But there are some situations where, you know, for example, we have uh, dedicated timelines on how long we have to advertise for. And if we, we miss a, you know, a newspaper intake period, for example, then we have to delay everything by one week, which may line up with a committee meeting, which delays it ultimately two weeks for, uh, for some of these items. So by being able to advertise an alternative methods, we can just keep schedule on a lot of these items. Um, you know, I, I would say that all the, the residents in an affected area, that's, that's a practice that's not often utilized through this section of the legislation, just due to, uh, you know, practical purposes. Um, but we're not talking about specific planning decisions. Um, this section of the legislation and what is reflected through this bylaw is a specific section of the legislation that is only, only governs those items that were legislatively required to advertise. So this is limited to typically statutory plan amendments, like a land use bylaw, municipal development plan. Uh, you know, coincidentally, a public notification bylaw, there's, there's certain things that we are legislatively tied to this section, and that's, and when we are legislatively tied to section six oh six, that's when we go through section six oh six's advertising process.
Thank you. If I can follow up, Mr. Chair, or if I could speak to the motion, actually.
Please.
Um, I'm not, I'm not, not in favor of having additional mechanisms in place that we can advertise through different media. But I do want to make sure that newspaper is included moving forward. And I, I realize that that's the intent of this administration, and that's the, uh, I believe, kind of listening to comments, that's the intent of council too. However, that said, though, future administration, future council, maybe, may take advantage of, of the, 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 uh, bylaw and, uh, and take it at the word of it to say we don't have to advertise in the paper anymore. We can do it exclusively through electronic means. So unless there is an amendment put forward to include, I don't know what the wording would be, but to include newspaper advertising whenever possible, uh, I, I actually won't support moving this bylaw forward in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ostachik. Uh, Counselor, oh, they disappeared from my speakers list. Uh, Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, I agree. Um, I, I don't know what the wording is either, but, um, I like, uh, the newspaper, and I like what you said too, that if for some reason the newspaper guy is on holidays, because there's only one guy, you know, we should have flexibility beyond that to do another means if we have to do something in a timely manner. But beyond something like that, we should be, uh, using the newspaper. Is there a way to put that in here to give us that kind of flexibility? Because that would be exactly what you say, and that would be tying us into the newspaper, into the next administration.
Administration?
So when under section three one, we just, uh, clarified a little that we're still going to use the newspaper, unless for some reason the newspaper is temporarily not published, and then we can go to these alternative means. Something like that. I don't know.
Admin?
Oh, with CAO's, uh, permission, I will speak on this. So in, in our lens, and I completely understand where all of council is coming from, um, three point one is any notice required to be advertised under section six oh six. And then in the MGA, six oh six specifically deals with newspaper. But we certainly can take this back and make clarification and maybe expand on the requirements of sex, section six oh six in the bylaw. Um, I believe that we could, um, just defer this evening, or this item for this evening and bring it back in twenty twenty five. I'm not aware of any, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, please, CAO, but I'm not aware of any, uh, timelines that, uh, were required to have done by the end of the year.
CAO?
Uh, through the chair, that's correct. Um, I'm trying to think of an appropriate wording for a bylaw that would capture the intent, but it, it'd be something along the, something to the effect of inserting a new three point one one, that newspaper advertisements will be used whenever, uh, whenever, uh, possible or practical, something along those lines. It, I don't know if we're going to be able to draft something in absolutes, uh, something like this, but that would be my high level recommendation. Um, I, I don't see any harm, harm in, in adding that section. I don't think that it goes against the intent of six oh six point one. I, I think we can, we can do that.
So I'll, I'll allow myself a follow-up for the CAO, and then I'll go to Counselor Race. Um, might some potential wording, uh, be something to the effect of, you know, uh, unless noted by special resolution of council? Um, because in that case, what council, you know, what we're setting up is the expectation that, yep, we're going to go to our newspaper, that's part of that public communications piece. But we know the logistics of having a small, you know, uh, single proprietorship run newspaper, so to speak. Uh, it limits our ability to be efficient and responsive to the realities of the town. Then it requires council to be involved and actually make a special motion to capture that. Because then, I mean, ultimately what it comes down to is being responsible to the citizenry to say, well, we didn't go to the newspaper in this instance. And if a citizen on the street says that to me, well, why didn't you? Well, in this instance, we were not able, we were limited by these timelines as a town, so we had to respond. And we've got that captured by way of a council vote. Uh, is that, might that be an appropriate mechanism moving forward?
Uh, through the chair and members of council. You know, the intent of this bylaw really is to provide additional tools and additional flexibility to make sure that we can process all of these statutory plan amendments quicker, uh, by requiring that, uh, by motion of council. I, I don't think we're going to reach, meet the intent, and I would say that, you know, because these things can happen without our knowledge, right? If, you know, as an example, you know, the, the newspaper editor gets sick and, and they're delayed on, on issuing it, or, you know, the advertisement doesn't get in in time. It, it's those quick decisions to keep, keep the schedule that we're trying to accomplish here. Really is all we're, we're, we're trying to get at. So I think by Really is all we're 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 trying to get at. So I think by requiring a motion of council, I think it just, you know, I think we're back to the same timelines that if we didn't have this bylaw at all.
Uh, I have councillor race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I cannot support this um this motion, and I'm very thankful for councillor Ostachik bringing up what he did bring up, which is what I was saying maybe ten minutes ago. So I won't support this. I would support deferring it uh to a later date. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Council, uh, any further councillor house?
Yeah, I guess, and I don't know if we're overcomplicate, but I'm reading six oh six. And I'm reading uh notice of bylaw resolution, meeting, public hearing or other things must be published at least once a week for two consecutive weeks in at least one newspaper or other publication circulating in the area to which the proposed bylaw resolution or other thing relates or in which meeting or hearing is to be held. So if we're following six oh six, we have to put it in the newspaper. We have to put it in the newspaper. This is now additionally, we are going to be putting it also electronically. So the fact that we're adding this is just adding that. So future council or future administrations, unless six oh six in the M G A changes, has to put it in the newspaper. So I I realize it's not captured in that bylaw, but because it says six oh six, uh, I believe it is here. Uh, then it goes on to say mailed or delivered to every resident in the area to which the proposed bylaw resolution or things relates or in which the meeting or the hearing is held uh to be held. So there's a lot of things that are in the six oh six we have to follow. So I I get where council's coming from. I just, I don't see that it's required to name it here when we've already said that we're going to be using the M G A six oh six requirements for advertising when it says we at least one. So thank you.
Councillor Ostachik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, appreciate that clarification councillor house, but my understanding, though, is that if this bylaw passes, that gives administration the ability to forego the requirement to post it in the newspaper and it can be posted only electronically uh if so chosen. And I want to make sure that in the future at some point that doesn't wind up being the exclusively used option. There's a lot of people that still read the newspaper that don't necessarily go on the town website. They don't, they're not on social media, so they're not going to see town and hinting media posts. So unless I'm understanding this bylaw gives administration the ability to forego posting in the newspaper if it's done electronically, if administration could confirm that.
Admin, please.
Yeah, through the chair. Uh, and councillor house, you are correct that that is what uh section six oh six, but there is a different section of under that same heading that uh that determines the methods of advertising. And it's, you know, really the local newspaper directly sends something to every resident or uh other mechanisms authorized by bylaw through section six oh six point one. And section six oh six point one is what gives uh us the authorization to pass this bylaw. So we can by bylaw authorize other methods other than just the newspaper. So this, so that's what this does, but we don't have to to do it. There are there are certain elements of six oh six that we can't forego through bylaw, which would be all of the timelines um that are associated with it and uh and some other things, but the methods we can provide other options through bylaw.
I could follow up, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I appreciate that clarification from administration. And with that, I'm going to stand by all my previous statements regarding why I think it's important that it's continued to be uh advertised in the newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ostachik. Councillor House?
Yeah, I'm gonna, well, I'm not gonna go, I trust administration, uh, you know, and if it if that's the case and the rest of council. Um, I do, I too don't want, I want it to be in the newspaper as well. So I guess I'm reading into it a little differently. Um, because when I see read three point one, I guess when it says prescribed in section six oh six, I guess that's where I'm I'm getting caught up on when it says must be. Uh, because I, my understanding was must is a, it has to. Um, so but with that, then yeah, I I guess I'll I'll also uh go against my previous intent. Uh, I mean, I can withdraw it or we can pass it and then not do third reading and bring it back again for further, but uh that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Councillor, uh, it is your, sorry, I'm gonna
Yeah.
turn on your mic here.
Oh.
There we go. Thank you very much. Uh, we can seek to withdraw if that's your desire.
Yeah, with this new information and and the concerns that we have, um, I'd like administration to take it back and 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 reword it so that it includes that. So I will move to withdraw the current motion.
Council, I am going to seek to see if there is any opposition to withdrawing the motion from the floor. Give it one last chance. Councillor Race, do you have opposition? Then uh that motion is withdrawn from the floor. Thank you very much. Council, councillor race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that council defer the decision to a future meeting of council.
Administration, do you require any further uh information in that motion?
Uh, through the chair to members of council, if the additional information that council seeking could be reflected through bylaw. I I know, I know right now what what is uh needed, but you know, in a couple of weeks from now, I may forget the conversation. So it would be appreciated to just clarify what council's after.
Um, you and I talked previously about this. Could you help me with the wording on this? I'd like to see newspaper added to um, maybe as three point one point three?
Yeah. Made a motion. That's, that's correct. Uh, councillor Sashik, you did make a motion to uh defer councillor race? Um, administration, uh, I'll just seek a point of uh clarification. Uh, is it acceptable to you for council uh to provide additional information following up the motion to defer? That's where I feel you could get any clarification on the bylaw specifically.
Uh, through the chair, yeah, that that'd be fine.
So council, the additional details that council can provide can still come after the motion to defer. Council, uh, we have a motion to defer on the floor. Any discussion? None, then as soon as it appears, there we are. I will call the question that council defer bylaw number two zero zero two to a future meeting of council. Council, if you can, please vote now. That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. Uh, councillor Ostachik.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to move that, I'd like to move to direct administration to add to section three advertising method. Sorry, add to three point one. Um. In a newspaper or other publication circulating in the area whenever proc, sorry, whenever possible and practical.
We'll just councillor, we'll make sure that that's captured.
Circulating in the area. Whenever possible and practical. Um. The C A, C A L. If I could speak to it, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Uh, I think having this as part of the bylaw um makes it a requirement of administration to make sure that they they are still advertising in newspaper or publication. However, it does give the leeway that if that's not practical due to timelines. Uh, heaven forbid that we cease to have a local newspaper publication at some point in the future or other thing that prevents that, it can still be advertised electronically and still be compliant with the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Taylor.
Um, so your intent is to put that something like that would go into um the the main paragraph there on three point one. And then uh alternatively, three point one one and three point one two would follow as written.
Councillor Ostachik.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's exactly the intent. I ideally, I think this would become the new three point one one. And then the other two points would become three point one two and three point one three. That's up to administration, but yes, the other two points would still stand.
Councillor House?
I don't, I I, as I read it, would it be more appropriate to put and or? Because it's saying advertising method in a newspaper or other publication. So is that not also in just the wording than giving you that opportunity that if it's not the newspaper versus others? As I know, you got the practical and the possible, but the biggest point I'm hearing tonight is is at all possible. We want it in the newspaper. So I don't know if just or is the appropriate or is and or?
Thank you, councillor house. Councillor Ostachik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, that's the wording from six oh six.
Oh, okay.
It's newspaper or other publication circulating in the area, I believe, is the material is is the wording from the M G A. Is that correct?
Admin?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'll speak to this. I'll be supportive of this. Uh, this is actually um that being said, if if Hinton was of such a size that we had a daily publication newspaper with a larger uh publication um group, um, I wouldn't support any changes at all, because I think you have the daily ability to change what publications need to happen. That being said, we are limited and I I think part of this is ensuring that the municipality can still conduct business uh if there was an interruption to the flow of uh newspaper service in the community as well. So given that reality, I'll be, I'll be in favor of this. Thank you. Councillor House?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. It then covers everything that we want uh to we want able to advertise and to get it to as many people as possible in our community. So this achieves that. Uh, that's great. So thank you.
Thank you. Council, I have no one else on the speakers list. One last chance. Uh, any further discussion on the councillor Ostachik?
Uh, thank you. I know it's a little bit semantic, but this should be to add to section three point one.
Thank you, councillor.
And and I'm sorry to administration. I don't know, I'd look for some assistance, but the heading of section three point one isn't advertising method. That's the heading of section three. So I don't know, is it okay like that? Or is it? Uh, or should it just be to section? Add to section three point one of bylaw two zero zero two and not have anything in there about advertising method?
Administration, you would request a clarification. Does that, is that clear the way it is? Or do you need uh some wording changes?
Uh, through the chair, I I think either one works. To be honest, I think both are clear. Uh, we could just say section three and we'll just, you know, give us a little bit of flexibility to work in that uh the the intent of what we're looking at in the most and the best way.
I'm fine with that wording, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor. Council, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, then when it appears on our screen, I'll call it a question. We'll call the question that council direct administration to add section three, advertising method in a newspaper or other publication circulating in the area whenever possible and practical. Council, if you can, please vote now. Councillor Race, I do have you voting. Councillor Taylor, are you in favor? Councillor Taylor's in favor. That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, council, anything further councillor house?
Yeah, I guess just a clarifying question. Um, we've got a motion that passed to defer this, however, it, could we continue on with this this evening and not defer it? Because I mean, by the sounds of it, with that change of word, that that's that accomplishes the goal to save time to bring it back to another meeting or because of the motion to defer, we we then have to wait till the next regular. Is that?
C A O, if you would, please.
Yeah, through the chair. I I would, you know, I I would respect the motion to defer and that will bring us back with that change included. Um, you know, we'll just make, you know, we'll double check the wording. We'll make sure that it's in the appropriate spot, make sure that we bring back a finished product. So.
Okay.
Um.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, C A O. Council, anything else on action item seven point one? Seeing none, then we will move on to action item seven point two, parks, recreation and culture user fees for bylaw number two zero zero one dash two. Admin?
Thank you, Chair, and I will turn this over to Ms. Wei.
Thank you, C A O. Good evening, council. Uh, last week at committee, we reviewed the recreation user fees. Um, we also looked at a low income recreation access program, and those numbers have been incorporated into the schedule attached to this report this evening. Um, ultimately, we're just looking to have you amend bylaw two zero zero one dash two. So as later in the meeting, those, these fees for recreation will be included and therefore they will um come into effect with the passing of that bylaw. Um, as a second order of business, we also need to rescind our previous parks and recreation uh user fee policy C S seventy two hundred so that we don't have uh contradicting information. Thank you so much. I can take any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor Taylor.
I just want to confirm something. Um, that low income fee, that's revenue neutral, correct? Because that could bring new users that can't afford uh to come to the rec center. So it's not going to cost us anything.
That's correct, councillor Taylor.
It might even be revenue plus.
You got it?
Hopefully. Thank you.
Council, any further discussion? Councillor Race?
Thank you, sir. A question for admin. Um, flooding the ice, what is the initial cost for the initial flooding?
Thank you, councillor race. I don't have the that fee direct in front of me unless I scoured through here. Um, is there a specific reason you're asking about the price?
I know it talks about additional floods or twenty five dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I I and I don't know a lot about flooding, but just um you do an initial flood?
Hmm. So when the program starts, so if somebody rents the ice, the the sheet comes flooded. It's ready for use in that moment. Uh, the reason that we don't include the flood in the price of the rental um is due to the fact that many of our users, for example, with um minor hockey, the little kids aren't going to tear up the ice as much as the older kids. So in order to keep their overall costs for renting the facility down, some of our user groups kind of do like a buffet style where they will choose to they will choose to have a flood for the older kids in between their games or in between their periods, whereas with the little kids, they may decide to just have one flood per game. Um, so that just keeps their overall costs down.
Already, thank you.
Council, there is no motion on the floor. If councillor Taylor?
Go with the recommended action that we amend the fees rates charges by law. Uh, two thousand one two to include parks, recreation and culture fees as presented.
Uh, do you care to speak to that councillor?
Well, I think it's just a timely update.
Okay, thank you.
And I think uh on second thought on the addition, um, it's not going to cost us anything to make it more accessible. It's going to increase uh the number of people that use it. So that might actually bring us more money.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor house?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm in favor of this. Um, I think that uh it's proven, you know, with the bus uh and changing it, it increased the user uh rates uh for that. And it also um encourages other people to use the facility, which we, you know, uh, always want to see more more bodies in the facility. So uh, I'm totally in favor of this and looking forward to seeing what uh comes in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I have myself up next. Uh, I'm very supportive of this, and I do want to thank administration for the inclusion of a low income fee option. I think uh the economic reality facing a lot of our citizens right now, it's it's pretty dire for some. Uh, and for a lot of families, what that means is being very limited on what they can do for recreation. These are facilities that are open anyway. These are facilities that are open anyway. And the reality is, is that, you know, it's very difficult to achieve cost neutral in the grand scheme of recreation. And with that in mind, these are facilities that exist for the benefit of the public good. So if we can get more people in there, given the reality participating and benefiting from these facilities, then I'm all for that. And admin, I know at standing committee, you had said there'd be a follow up in a year with the council of the day to let them know how successful this program is. Whether I'm up here or whether I'm on the sidelines watching, I think that'll be very interesting to know how this benefited folks in our community. So thank you. Counsel, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, then we will call the question the council amends the fees rates charges by law. Number two zero zero one dash two to include the parks, recreation and culture fees as presented. Counsel, if you can, please vote now. Thank you, Counselor Ostachik voting in favor. That is carried unanimously. Five to zero. Counselor Hoss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to also move that council rescinds the recreation and parks fee, the parks user fee policy C S dash seventy two hundred.
Do you care to speak to that, Counselor?
It has to be done in order for the other to work. So.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counsel, any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, then we'll move that we'll call the question that council rescinds the recreation and parks user fee policy C S dash seventy two hundred. Counsel, if you can, please vote now. Counselor Taylor, if you could vote. In favor. That is carried unanimously. There is. Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Taylor.
When do these come into effect? Is it too late for me to renew my annual membership and my SWP pass?
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. It's never too late. We it'll take us through the next two weeks to roll it out and switch over our computer system. So it'll be January first.
Right on. Thanks. Got two weeks.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, anything else on item seven point two? Seeing none. Admin will move on to action item seven point three, the water utility by law number two zero zero five.
Chair, I'll turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Good evening, Council. In front of you tonight is Water Utility Bylaw number two zero zero five for third and final reading. As C A O pointed out at the beginning of the meeting, we did have a uploading issue where a previous version was put into the package, but we corrected that before council starts. So the the right ones are in the package tonight. As well as we did find one administrative error that we'll correct in definition two point two six. We still had level one, level two, level three in describing the outdoor water use restrictions, but in schedule A instead of schedule G as it's there. We've called them stages instead of levels. And so it's just a it's just an admin error. We don't need a a motion to correct that, but I just wanted to point that out. And with that, we'll take any questions on the bylaw.
Great, thank you. Counsel, any questions for administration on the bylaw? Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. So I do have some questions on the comparables that you gave us. And one that I find really concerning is failure to provide a meter reading.
Through the Counselor Race, that'll be those will be talked about when we get to the fees and schedule by law. Currently, we're on the the water utility by law.
I'm just so eager to get to this. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Counselor Hoss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move the council give the water utility by law number two zero zero five, third and final reading as presented. If I can speak to it, you know, we've had a lot of public input on this matter. You know, it's the responsible thing to do in regards to our town and the future of our water. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any further discussion on the water utility by law? Seeing none, then we'll call the question that council gives water utility by law. Number two zero zero five, third and final reading as presented. Counsel, if you can, please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Counsel. Counsel, anything else on that action item? Seeing none, then we will carry on to action item seven point four sewer and wastewater by law number two zero zero six. Administration.
Thank you, Counsel. So this is sewer and wastewater by law number two zero zero six. Again, we completed our first and second readings at the December third meeting, and this is in front of you tonight for third and final reading. And I don't really have any comments on this one.
Thank you, administration. Counsel, any discussion, questions or motions? Counselor Taylor.
I'll go with the recommended action that council give the sewer and wastewater by law number two zero zero six, third and final reading as presented. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you care to speak to that, Counselor?
No, these are going to involve big utility fee increases, but this is a this is a core service that's needed. Wastewater and sewer. So it's something we have to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel, any discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none. I'll call to question that council give the sewer and wastewater by law number two zero zero six. Third and final reading as presented. Counsel, if you can, please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Counsel. Counsel, anything further on action item seven point four? Seeing none, then we will carry on to seven point five. The fees rates and charges by law number two zero zero one dash two. Administration.
Thank you, Counsel. So the fees rate and charges by law number two zero zero one dash two is before you because we've added the additional fines and fees and updated our charges for utility rates. We did first and second reading on December third. Counsel at that time also directed administration to compare the proposed fines for the water and sewer bylaws to or for the water bylaw to our municipal comparators. So we did that comparison and that's included in the report. Generally speaking, the the fees that administration proposed in the in the bylaw was very, very similar to the city of Calgary, which is actually where we got the template for the bylaw before we changed it to fit Hinton. But when compared to our municipal comparators, the fines would be considered high compared to that. So we have put forward a alternate fine schedule if counsel likes that one better. Then you would follow the option two in the report. It's you find that better. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, administration. Counsel, any questions, motions or discussion for this item? Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. So where did you say I could find the the second option?
Counselor Race, that's under section seven point five as a link. It's the third link down. It says alternate tables specified penalties.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that on my computer.
Through the chair, it is also on page one twelve of one thirty one, depending on which one you're looking at.
Hey, thanks.
Do you have a question you want to pose about that table right now?
No, I'm good right now.
Okay. Counsel, the floor is open. Counselor Taylor.
I prefer the attachment two. So my recommended action is going to be because the the information as presented is a copy of the Calgary. I believe attachment two is more reflective of the fines and fees that smaller communities charge and need to charge. Calgary maybe needs to charge more for whatever reasons. So my recommended actions that council give the fees rates and bylaws of bylaw number two zero zero one dash two. Third and fire finer reading as amended to include attachment two.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor.
That covers it. That we're going to amend those those charges to those. So I think that's good.
So we'll just wait to make sure that it's captured, Counselor Taylor. We'll have a look at it. While that's happening, though, I will give a couple of counselors the chance to speak. Counselor Hoss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'll be in favor of this. I think it's still a reasonable amount. And as Counselor Taylor said, you know, I too looked at the comparators and I mean, granted, you know, yeah, Calgary may have their reasons, but I think these are more in line with communities our size and there's still a substantial penalty for for any violation. So I'll be in favor of that amendment. And in favor of the feats and charges as a result.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. I'll be in favor of the motion and the amendment. I really appreciate the work that administration did. They took a fifteen hundred dollar fine for not reporting a damaged water meter down to two fifty, which seems a lot more reasonable. And failure to provide a meter reading, they took from five hundred to two fifty. So thank you for your good work.
Counsel, any further discussion on this? I will go back to Counselor Taylor. Counselor Taylor, does the motion on the screen reflect your intention?
Yes.
Very well. Counsel, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question that council give fees rates and charges by law number two zero zero one dash two. Third and final reading as amended to include attachment two. Counsel, if you can, please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Counsel. Counsel, any further directions, discussion or items from action item seven point five? Seeing none, then we will move on to action item seven point six, the R F D for the FOIP by law number two zero zero eight. Administration.
Thank you, Chair. This this bylaw is really just a housekeeping item. One of the things that we should have is a high level enabling document that appoints usually the C A O as the head of the organization and for FOIP officers to be designated as such. So we are requesting all three readings today if council believes that's appropriate.
Thank you very much, Admin. Counsel. Anything for administration or any motions? Counselor Hoss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to move that council gives first reading to FOIP by law two zero zero eight. And just I guess to following up. I'm assuming this will also improve efficiencies and things within the organization as well, having this bylaw.
Admin.
Through the chair. I wouldn't necessarily say that it'll improve efficiencies. It's just really an item of the FOIP Act that we should have in place. Yeah.
We'll continue to do the business we do, but we have a bylaw now to follow. Gotcha. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoss. I have a question for admin. High level, great news, doesn't avoid, doesn't involve us. But I was reading some news out of the Cochrane. So as as a question. What would happen if the FOIP requests revolved around a C A O and the C A O was the FOIP officer? Is is there like a secondary fallback? Like a deputy C A O, C A O would then handle the FOIP request? Or would it go to the mayor? Like, how does that? How does that work?
Through the chair, to be to be perfectly honest. I don't know. You know, I've never actually been the FOIP officer. Typically, it's just worded this way to say, and this is just worded the same in almost all municipal documents is the C A O is the head of the organization and everything else is delegated from there. So most, most things, we don't need a separate bylaw because that is covered in a very general sense in the M G A that that's how it works. So I'm just to be clear. I am not and I will continue to not be the FOIP officer that will be designated to a staff. But I guess, you know, same concept if it comes to a member of staff. I'm not sure how that's handled, but I'm sure there's procedures through the FOIP Act that would dictate how those things are handled.
Great. Okay, thanks. Counsel, we do have a motion on the floor. Any discussion or debate on that item? Seeing none, we'll call the question that council gives first reading to FOIP by law two zero zero eight. Counsel, if you can, please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Counselor Taylor.
The council gives second reading to FOIP by law two zero zero eight.
Sorry, clarify, motion? That was a motion?
Yeah, that was recommended action two.
Perfect. Do you care to speak to it, Counselor? Counsel, any further discussion or debate on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question that council gives second reading to FOIP by law number two zero zero eight. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to move the council gives unanimous consent to move to third reading. A FOIP by law two zero zero eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any discussion on this? For myself, I will. I'll support this. I just want it noted that normally I'm not a big fan of moving through third or three readings in a single night. That being said, this is this is housekeeping. So thank you very much. Counsel, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call the question that council gives unanimous consent to move to third reading of FOIP by law two zero zero eight. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel, Counselor Hoss.
I'd like to move the council gives third reading to the FOIP by law two zero zero eight.
Any discussion, Counselor? Seeing none. Counsel, any discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, we'll call the question that council gives third reading to FOIP by law two zero zero eight. Counsel, if you can, please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything further on action item seven point six? Seeing none, we will move on to action item seven point seven. R F D twenty twenty four West Yellowhead Trail Society allocation. Administration, please.
Thank you, Chair. I will turn this over to Ms. Borbo.
Thank you, Counsel. We're here before you this evening. Looking for direction on release of funds allocated to West Yellowhead Trail Society in twenty twenty four as conditions applied to monies through consensus motion C O W two, three, one, 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 four point zero five have been satisfied in the society's latest report that came to council in October of twenty twenty four. So the motion that was made back in twenty twenty three placed a caveat on the release of the funds for the giving the society an opportunity to sort out trail ownership and long term maintenance of the trail. In the report that the society brought to council on October eighth, twenty twenty four, they've updated the future ownership of the trail being the province of Alberta and reported that trail operations and maintenance would be facilitated by a pathway to the park trail manager. And with that, I will take any questions.
Counsel, Counselor Ostachik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To administration, I'm not sure if you have the information before you, but do we recall? do we recall what the purpose of that original request for two twenty twenty four funding was to be used for?
Uh, through to all of council, in reviewing the motions, I did not come up with any contingency on what the funds were to be used for. It was simply the caveat on the ownership of the, the future ownership of the trail and a maintenance fund, both of which were items addressed in the recent, um, presentation done by the Trail Society.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. To administration, who, who is the manager who's going to oversee maintenance? Uh, uh, do they have a name, an organization?
Uh, through to all of council, I was not provided with the name. It has been made clear to me through conversations that the, uh, management and operation of the trail is going to be done internally by the society for the foreseeable future until they are more established. Uh, Hinton Mountain Bike Association had similar constraints and concerns, and I've been made aware of the funding stream for this type of maintenance that has been made, uh, available through the province. And I've, I've been advised that the, uh, West Yellowhead Trail Society will also be looking to access those funds. After three years of application, the Mountain Bike Society was able to get some funds from the province for maintenance. So they're hopeful.
C A O.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'll, I'll just add one other, uh, thing to Ms. Borbo's, um, but, uh, the trail ownership, uh, cause there was two issues, trail ownership and long-term maintenance, trail ownership in the process that, that society has, uh, gone down. The, the owner will be the province. Uh, it will be designated if they're successful and going through their detailed design. Um, so that has been, um, you know, confirmed through the, the trail maintenance plan and confirmed by the province, the long-term maintenance, um, that will be done, uh, by the society who will take on a, the trail manager designation. So they will be in care and control of the, uh, of the trail itself. So.
Counselor Haas.
Okay. So the province will own it. The society will will oversee the maintenance of it. Who pays for it?
Uh, please, Admin.
Through the, uh, through the chair to members of council. Who, who pays for it is, still hasn't been determined. That's actually one of the conditions that is placed on a, uh, a trail owner through the detailed design stages. They have to show where the money's going to come from, both for the capital and the operating expense of the asset.
So the fact, so if I can clarify, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
So the stipulations that were put on it is who's going to own it? And then who's going to maintain it? But that's all that was in the previous motion. It didn't have anything to do with the financial responsibility of the, the maintenance of it to release these funds.
Uh, through the chair noted.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Ostagh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a clarification question to administration. Uh, I heard some comments that Hinton Mountain Bike Association gets funding from the province for trail maintenance. Uh, and I just need clarification. Does West Yellowhead Trail Society? Have they been approved to get provincial funding for trail maintenance? Or you were saying that that is a avenue that may be open to them for funding?
Uh, through to all of council and appreciate the opportunity to clarify. That is a new avenue of funding that has been made available for these types of organizations and this type of recreation that's occurring in the province.
If I may, please, but West Yellowhead Trail Society is not currently approved to get any funding from that program, correct?
Not that I've been made aware. No.
Thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Haas.
Um, and just to be clear and clarifying too, this is budget, this is money that's already been budgeted for, uh, in our twenty twenty four budget deliberations back in twenty twenty three. So this is not new money. This is sitting aside waiting for these, uh, stipulations, correct?
Through all of council, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel. Counselor Taylor.
Uh, I'd like to go with the recommended action that a council approved the release of the funds allocated to the West Yellowhead Trail Society in two thousand twenty four. As conditions applied to the money through consensus motion, um, listed there having been satisfied.
Do you care to speak to that, counselor?
Just briefly. Decision we have, uh, to face today is whether the pathway to the park met the conditions of the funding that we gave back in, uh, whatever year it was, two thousand twenty three. Um, because it's not whether we approve the funding, it's whether they met those conditions. We've already approved that funding. I believe that the trail ownership, uh, issue is being resolved is going to be the province and that the pathways indicated that, uh, they're going to take over the maintenance through this, uh, management thing. I think it's important that we show that when we make an agreement, we keep it. And it's worth noting that this is also administration's recommended action to release the money. So they feel that it's been, the conditions have been met too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Uh, Counselor Ostagh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I won't be supporting the motion that's on the table currently. For myself, I, I'm not satisfied that they met the conditions as they were originally laid out. I appreciate that there's definitive clarification on who is owning the trail and that's the province of Alberta. I appreciate that. I appreciate that the Trail Society has also appointed a trail manager. But in terms of how the maintenance is going to be conducted, what's going to be required, what's going to be done and how it's going to be funded? I think those were all important questions that were brought forward as, as part of the conditions when we discussed this. And I don't believe those questions have been adequately answered for me. Uh, I don't believe that they have currently got a source of committed sustainable funding. Uh, I don't believe that they've got any type of estimated maintenance costs. Uh, and unfortunately, I believe at this stage, they cannot have costs for maintenance, uh, without having a detailed design or the newly required report from our so they, sorry, the newly required support from local municipalities. So I can't support this moving forward because for me personally, I don't believe the conditions have been met. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ostagh. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, I just, uh, want to point out, um, and I'll, then I'll speak to the motion, but, uh, the, the motion is actually two, three, one, one, four point oh six, not point oh five. Oh, five is a different matter, just for clarification.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, and if I may speak to it, yeah, I, I don't, I too don't feel that the, uh, the, the terms have been met. Um, it's, it's the maintenance component that, that I'm stuck on. Um, I guess taking ownership and taking that we're going to maintain it, but that's, that's not enough detail for me to release these funds quite yet. Um, that needs to be established. Uh, that's been a major question from day one, uh, and to me that, that question has not been answered yet at this point to release those funds. So thank you.
Counsel, any further discussion on this item?
I'll speak to it, uh, briefly. Uh, as it relates to meeting the conditions, I do believe that the, the conditions have been met. Uh, I understand that there's a lot of concern in especially our county neighbors, uh, community about whether or not there are some planning concerns that exist. That's for myself, not part of the consideration tonight. Looking specifically at under what conditions these funds were allocated, uh, my feeling is that they have been, so I would, I would hate to go beyond that, uh, and put further conditions on that after the fact. So I will be supporting the motion on the floor. Uh, Counselor Ostagh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my consideration for not supporting the motion on the floor is purely based on my role as a counselor for the town of Hinton. Without dedicated communicated source of, uh, maintenance funding, I have grave concerns that if this trail is constructed and there is no source of dedicated sustainable maintenance dollars, that there may be a day where council is faced with a decision where they have to come up with ongoing maintenance dollars for the portion of the trail that's within town boundaries. And that's something that I do not support and I never have supported. I supported getting some seed money to do initial legwork and to do some research and investigation on the viability and feasibility of this trail. But one of the things that I never supported was any type of ongoing maintenance cost. And without having that surety, it, it makes me worry a lot that a future council is going to be faced with a requisition for annual maintenance dollars on the portion of the trail that's within the town boundaries. And that's why I'm not prepared to release this today because that is the integral part of the trail, uh, maintenance management plan that I need to know is in place before I would support something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, I won't support this motion. I don't feel that they have met the requirements. Uh, for many of the same reasons that, uh, Counselor Ostagh has mentioned and Counselor Haas. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Uh, Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it, it's too bad we weren't, uh, in a way more specific in our previous motion on this fifty thousand dollars and it's and went into detail what long-term maintenance is. So I have to interpret that in my own way. And in my way, saying that we're going to maintain it, but having no plan on how that's going to happen in financial contributions. Um, and I too have, you know, that, that has been part of, and we've talked to the, the group about, you know, what's, what is it going to look like in the town limits? Uh, in regards to maintenance and that's never been answered and I too am not prepared to fund that either. So I feel that long-term maintenance doesn't, the, what is needed for me to be comfortable to release those funds have not been determined yet. So thank you.
Counsel, any further discussion or debate on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I will to call the question that council approved the release of funds allocated to the West Yellowhead Trail Society in twenty twenty four as conditions applied to monies through consensus motion. C O W dash twenty three, one, 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 four, dash, zero, or pardon me, uh, point zero six have been satisfied. Counsel, if you can please vote now. And that is defeated, uh, with counselors Haas, Ostagh and Race against. Counsel. The floor is open. Are there any other items related to, uh, this action item? Seeing none, then we will move on to action items seven point eight, the Hinton District Chamber of Commerce, letter of support. Uh, administration, please.
Thank you, Chair, to members of council. So this, this items before you today, the Chamber of Commerce has made a request to support, uh, issue a letter of support for their small community opportunity grant program. Um, so we have included a draft of what that may look like. And, uh, you know, if, if council does go with the recommended action that we will get that off to the Chamber of Commerce in short order so they can submit their application.
Counsel. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move the council approve the letter of support for the Hinton District, uh, Chamber of Commerce application for the Small Community Opportunity Grant Program.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor. Uh, counsel, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call the question that council approved the letter of support for the Hinton District Chamber of Commerce application for the Small Community Opportunity Grant Program. Counsel, if you can please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, counsel. Anything further on that item? Action item seven point nine, uh, administration, do you care to verbally introduce this one, please? Cancellation of December twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, committee of the whole meeting.
Uh, through the chair, nothing else to add. It is Christmas Eve and, uh, I, I don't think anybody wants to show up.
Thank you very much, Counselor Taylor.
I, I think all you guys should show up. I will be skiing in, in sunshine.
Counsel, we are, thank you, Counselor Ostagh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, despite Counselor Taylor's wishes, I'd like to move to counsel, the December twenty fourth, twenty twenty four committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counsel, any discussion on that item? Counselor Haas.
For the record, I was prepared to be here that. I told my family I got a council meeting, so, but I will support this motion though. So thank you.
Thank you very much, counsel or counselor. Counsel, any further discussion on that action item? Seeing none, we will call the question that council, counsel, the committee of the whole meeting on December twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Counsel, if you can please vote now. And weird things are happening electronically. Counsel, if you could please indicate all those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Can you see what I see? All right. There we go. Uh, and that brings us to eight, uh, notices of motion. Administration, do we have any notices of motion?
We do not.
Thank you very much. Reporting, we will begin to my left, far left, Counselor Ostagh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, couns-
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Not other than, but I do want to take the opportunity just to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year since we won't be back until after. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first off, I want to thank the, uh, town of Edson for hosting the intermissible Christmas party, uh, last week. Um, very, uh, food was fantastic. Um, I wasn't able to stay for a great deal of time. I had to travel afterwards to Grand Prairie, but you know, I want to thank Yellowwood County members for also attending and it was a great opportunity to mingle and, and talk to other, other counselors in other areas. So, um, I also want to just mention, um, so the Friends of the Library invited the library board. Uh, we had a joint, uh, get together last, uh, night, uh, Monday evening and, um, got to know some of the members are on the friendship, uh, Friends of the Library Board. Uh, they are new. Uh, they are still in the throes of getting all their paperwork and everything done and Canada Post being on strike has not assisted in that. However, they're working on that, but we had a great brainstorming session as to, you know, how can the Friends of the Library support the library? Um, so these were, um, they're, what it's intended to do is the Friends of the Library is a, uh, fundraising group. Um, but not for operational or other capital, uh, general capital costs, but it's more for wants. So for example, uh, we used to have a three D printer, um, and, uh, it got overused and, um, we did not want to take capital funds, uh, as a library board to replace it. So these are projects that the Friends of the Library could take on. So they're extras in the library. So had a lot of good conversation and, and talks of how to also generate the money. So they were talking about, um, you know, raffles and, and casinos and all those types of things as well. So that was really good to meet with them. Um, we don't have a B B O C meeting this month. Uh, however, we are meeting, uh, tomorrow evening for a group picture of the, uh, group to, uh, put on our strategic plan because we've been, uh, uh, working on that and finalizing it. The other thing that I, I think I should mention, the B B O C committee, we've, we've, uh, appointed a subcommittee. Uh, I think there's three or four individuals. We need to do some changes of the signage out there and, and the information, some of the information is, uh, needs to be changed and, and spruced up a bit. Even talking about having some, I think, Q R codes or something out there so you can get more information on, but that group is going to be, uh, going through the Beaver Boardwalk, uh, taking pictures of all the things and then bringing recommendations back to the rest. So that's something that's happening. Uh, other than that, I also too want to take the time to wish everyone, uh, happy holidays and, uh, to be safe and family and friends. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. We will go over to Counselor Race.
Thank you, sir. I only have two things to report. On Thursday, as part of the arch team, I, um, I was at the hospital and we were serving meals to all the healthcare staff. I was on the dessert table and the drink table, and it was so nice to see and hear how appreciative everybody was to have that meal. And I got to say a big shout out, um, Dr. Sorenson only has a few more days left being. only has a few more days left being a doctor to us. And what a wonderful lady. What a wonderful doctor she's been to our community. And one last thing is I too attended the little Christmas get together in Edson, and it was wonderful seeing all the county people and to see the municipality of Edson. So Merry Christmas to all of you guys, and thank you so much for staying.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Taylor.
Merry Christmas. Ditto on the Christmas thing.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. And of course, as my colleagues have mentioned, on behalf of the community and council, very Merry Christmas to everybody. We hope everybody gets a good chance to spend some time with family and friends over the holidays. And really just, just enjoy yourselves making this a memorable transition from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five and have a Happy New Year. We will move on to C A O reporting the status report. C A O.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing to report, but I share the same sentiment. Merry Christmas to everybody and we'll, we'll see you all in the new year.
Thank you very much, C A O. Counsel, any questions for our C A O before we move on? We do have a closed sec, a session under section ten. Counsel, Counselor Haas.
Like to move that we go into closed session.
Well, counsel, any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll call the question that council move into closed session at six twelve P M. Counsel, if you could please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. We will reconvene in closed session after a seven-minute break. So at approximately six twenty. Admin, do you want to meet back in here or in chambers next door? Or pardon me, in council room next?